I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hampshire County Board of Education to order. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors. Let's pray. We all re-thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together tonight. We are mindful of the many blessings that we all enjoy and in fact that we take for granted. We're thankful for the things that take place here tonight concerning the education of our young people. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and that all things that take place here tonight, not only here but throughout our country, will be pleasing in your sight. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. If we have them, the national anthem was performed by Murray Middle School, Principal Patrick McCarty, and instructor was Laura Black. Is there a microphone over there?
Right there in front of Ms. uh...
Oh, if that could be rotated among the members and if they could tell us their name and their grade level and what they play, that's always interesting.
They got it? Name, grade, position. Emma? Isn't that on?
I don't think, is it on?
Emma, 8th grade violin.
Sydney, 7th grade violin.
Joan, 8th grade violin.
Michaela, 8th grade violin.
Trevor, 8th grade viola.
Robert, 8th grade viola.
Johanna, 7th grade cello.
Charlotte, 8th grade cello.
Delja, 8th grade cello.
Linda, 7th grade cello.
Kaylee, 7th grade cello.
Hannah, 7th grade cello.
Maddie, 8th grade bass.
Megan, wait, Megan, 8th grade bass.
Frida, 7th grade bass.
Haley, 7th grade ba- viola.
Mia, 7th grade viola.
Nadia, 7th grade viola.
Noah, violin, 7th grade.
Leith Ryan, 7th grade violin.
Jaden, 7th grade violin.
Abby, 8th grade violin.
Courtney, 8th grade violin.
Campbell, 7th grade violin.
Haley, 8th grade violin.
Maria, 7th grade violin.
Kayla, 7th grade violin. That's all.
Thank you very much. If we could have our cadets come forward and introduce yourselves, your name, your rank, and the school you attend.
Cadet Captain Ladee.
Link EA Laney.
Cadet First Lieutenant Blizzard, EA Laney.
Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Buck, EA Laney.
Cadet Master Sergeant Riddle, EA Laney High School.
Thank you. And the cadets are under the command of Master Sergeant Bruce C. and Colonel Thomas Harrison Smith, and want to welcome y'all here tonight. And if you would, I know you're not expecting this, but I saw on the news the other night something to me that was very moving, and it concerned EA Laney High School. Would someone like to comment as to what that news story was all about? We're very proud of you. And there's a microphone right here at the podium if you'd like to.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Colonel Harrison Smith, I'm the Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, Air Force Junior RTC at Laney High School. I'm new this year, loving the job. We've got 105 cadets this year starting off in the fall. This past Saturday, we partnered with Oakdale Cemetery, Pine Forest, and Bellevue, Mr. Eric Cozen, who's the caretaker at Oakdale, and asked us to come out if we would help them distribute 1,400 flags and honorably place them on the graves of veterans that were buried there. This was the fifth year that EA Laney NC 802 Air Force Junior RTC has done that over at Oakdale, but the first time at Bellevue and Pine Forest. So, we worked with him, with Woodman of the World, and also some VFW and some Sons of the American Revolution, and had a fantastic, beautiful day for that and a great turnout. It was our distinct honor to be able to do that, work with Mr. Cozen to honor the veterans. So, thank you very much.
Well, I would just add that as a Vietnam veteran, I was very moved by that, but also as Ms. Cozen pointed out, it wasn't just a matter of going along and sticking flags in, military salute was rendered, courtesy, respect was certainly paid, and I know it's appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's cake and refreshments, so I think between the cadets and the viola players and the violin players, I think we might can rid ourselves of this, because we don't need it. So, help yourselves to cake, there's punch in there and whatever, just help yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Cobble.
Here.
Lisa Easted.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is Approval of the Agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chair, I would ask that under Section 7 Head Start, that we remove items A, B, and C. They're being referred back to legal for a little more work.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item three, Approval of the Minutes of our Item A, Our Regular Meeting Minutes from October the 14th, 2014.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item B, Special Meeting Minutes from October the 21st, 2014.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item four is Recognition of Achievement.
Normally, our Public Information Officer gets this section, but I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege and do this first item. First, I want to say thank you to everyone in the audience. This community got together and by an overwhelming 64% approved a school bond for $160 million, largest in the county's history. So, from the school system, I want to personally say thank you for doing that. Now, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes a lot of work to do something like that. Earlier, we recognized our school-level folks in a reception. If any of those folks are still here, I'd ask that they please stand, our bond coordinators from the schools, and the central office folks. That's you too, Eddie. And say thank, and say thank you to them. We're here tonight to recognize community folks who, for, who came together to help us pass this bond. This group spoke to over 2,000 people at 40 different events. They met with groups from as small as five to as large as 200 and shared their passion about the bond. Now, the committee was co-chaired by two amazing ladies, Ann David and Diane Abey. They provided exceptional leadership. Diane's a former PIO and really provided a lot of advice and experience, and Ann, who works with us on our upfront with the superintendent, really brought a lot of passion to this. I would ask that those two ladies come forward.
Diane's been doing this since 1980.
So Diane, how many bonds is this for you?
I don't even know. But you can call me, it's gonna be the first time I know if I am working.
And for these two ladies, we have a special chairman's plaque that we'd like to present, and then ask you to stay up here while we call you fellow committee members. All right, for our other committee members, who folks, these folks put in amazing amount of time and hours and ideas, we would not have been able to do this without them. Ms. Dale Pelzy-Becton? Mr. Chris Boni? Ms. Cindy Castles? Mr. Jay Corplin? Mr. Ben David, who's not here. Ms. Sheila Evans? Mr. Clinton Howlett? Ms. Kathy G- Gresham? Ms. Shane Johnson, oh, Mr. Shane Johnson from the Realtor Association? Ms. Libby Ann Jones? Ms. Jennifer Kelly from the Riceville Beach Foundation? Dr. Larry Mabe, I know said he was teaching a class tonight. Mr. David Martin? And Mr. Jack Mills? Mr. Ernie Olds? Dr. Sandra Sheridan? Ms. Denise Soloki, who worked with our PTAs, is not here, and Ms. Lenore Young. And one other person I'd like to stand, who wasn't a committee member, but we probably got as much mileage out of this gentleman as anybody in terms of helping to explain taxes, and that's gonna be our newest board member in the back, Mr. Bruchel. Thank you. Thank you all for your support. So for our chairman, who's running the line, we'll give a big kiss. Now, when we break the ground and shovel on the first project, I'm gonna make, ask you all to come back and see the fruits of your labor. Thank you. All right, so it's Ms. Nichols now?
Okay, good. Diane said she'd be here the next time, too.
Could not have had better group of officers working.
Absolutely. But without that great committee, and all of us' help at the schools and the community, we could have not done it had we not had Dr. Markley as our leader. And so, Dr. Markley, you get a special plaque to go among your many, many plaques, but this is the best one of all. Thank you so much. Wonderful.
We're surprised you didn't, we thought you were. Okay, our next recognition goes to Castle Hain Elementary School. The school's art program has been ranked number seven in the state by Artsonia, which is the world's largest online kids' art museum. Ms. Riley Woods, an art teacher at Castle Hain, has also been recognized by Artsonia for her outstanding leadership in the area of arts education. Ms. Woods goes beyond the classroom walls to encourage family and community involvement in arts education and integrates technology in her art classroom. Last school year, Castle Hain's online art gallery showcased thousands of pieces of artwork that were shared with family and friends through the online Artsonia gallery. At this time, let us recognize Ms. Woods and her principal, Cindy Bliss. Please come forward.
She's number one right now.
Congratulations, Castle Hain. And Ms. Woods. Our next recognition goes to Mr. Taylor Spear, a math teacher at Isaac Bear Early College High School. Mr. Spear received the Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher Award from the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics. He was nominated by his principal, Mr. Philip Sutton, for his effectiveness as a math teacher, and then selected out of all the nominated math teachers in the state to be this year's winner. Wow, you are smart, Mr. Spear. Congratulations. And our last recognition for the evening goes to five of our schools who have earned the designation as a Green Model or Exemplar School in the annual North Carolina PBIS State Recognition Program. These schools have demonstrated tremendous collaboration and use of school data to implement research-based practices as well as develop supportive systems in the effort to teach students new and positive behaviors. So would you please come forward as we recognize you? And we also have Ms. Doublefield here, who's our behavior specialist. So, Principal Dr. Lauren Kaplanitis for Bradley Creek Elementary School, which earned the Green School Award. Next, we have Principal Jane Kiker and her team from Holly Shelter Middle School. They earned the Model School Award.
And I would just like to say that this standback today without taking her final test, so I now call her Nurse Standback. All she's been lacking is her visitation to become Doctor Standback, so we'll learn about her.
Our next school is represented by Principal Krista Holland, Gregory Elementary School, which earned the Exemplar School Award. Ms. Holland, and your team. Riceboro Elementary, we don't think they're here tonight, but they earned the Exemplar School Award. And finally, Principal Rebecca Higgins-Ogren and PBIS Coordinator Jenny Winkle for Pine Valley Elementary School, which also earned the Exemplar School Award. Congratulations to all our schools. As always, we're very proud of you all. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our Item Five, Call to the Audience. For this call to the audience concerning agenda items, no one has signed up, so we'll go to Item Six, Administrative Personnel. Item A, Administrative Recommendations, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
We have one administrative recommendation this evening, and that is for the Assistant Principal at Winter Park Elementary School. Ms. Goza will be retiring, her Assistant Principal, Mr. Slavik, will be stepping into that role, although I think he's been kinda feeling it for a while here. It's been a dual principalship. The person who's been named is Andrea Zawali. Ms. Zawali is currently a 4th grade teacher and mentor at Ogden Elementary School. Previously, she served as 4th grade teacher at Kitty Hawk Elementary School in Kitty Hawk, First Flight Elementary School in Kill Devil Hills, Barrett Elementary in Stafford County, Virginia. Her contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2016. She received her master's degree from Gardner Web and a bachelor's degree from Bloomberg University in Pennsylvania.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think Ms. Zawali is here.
Smiling.
And do you have anybody with you?
Yes, my neighbor, Ali Salada, and this is my best friend, Nicole, Debbie Lee.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item is Item Seven, is Head Start, that's been removed from the agenda.
Well, wait a minute, it has not been removed. The, as a report, as liaison, we're not gonna speak on what's here, but, you know, we do have to have a report of some form or shape or form, and so I'd just like to simply report that I did attend as liaison the initial parental meeting, Parents Council meeting on October 23rd. At that point in time, we had a presentation by a coordinator from Wayne County that was much more extensive. I was initially told it would be about the same thing we saw here when Head Start first came. It turned out to be much more extensive than that, and addressed many of the things that are being addressed in the bylaws, the arbitration panel, and the dispute resolution articles that are going back for further review. In addition, they also elected officers, they elected a president, a vice president, a secretary, and a treasurer of the organization, and would simply report to that the next meeting of the Parent Parental Council, which will be monthly, I think they have agreed on the third, Thursday of each month, will be on November the 20th. So, in the future, what I will be doing is going to visit the school, and we'll be bringing you a report about their attendance and how things are going. So, Ms. Adams, I would appreciate in the future, when you get to the Head Start, there'd be maybe always an A for a report from liaison.
Be happy to, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Next item, Item Seven, Under Information, Item A, Active Directory Conversion Overview, Appendix A, Dawn Branson.
Hello. I have prepared a presentation for you on our project that we've been working on for some time to convert our schools over to Active Directory. So I'll go through the timeline for you and then answer any questions that you may have. Basically, the project began in 10,000, 2010, 2011. We're moving to the Active Directory network structure. Our plan was at that time to do one school a month to give us time to do all of our other work orders and our other projects taken care of. In October of 2013, we stopped the project with ZenWorks because we were having some issues with ZenWorks. It just wasn't how we expected it to perform, and it was costing us extra. So we started investigating, going straight Microsoft in the spring of 2013, and then looked into the Microsoft EES agreement that you guys approved last, in January, and in that time, we kind of decided to figure out, is Microsoft the best fit? Going complete Microsoft, the operating system on our servers, it's on our desktops, our antivirus, and then the, basically the programs that allows us to push software out to our desktops. So in January, you guys approved the enrollment with the EES, and then in February, we started meeting with the Microsoft representative to talk about that transition. What would it look like? What would it be involved in, and what would it take? At that point in time, in February, we started then, at that time, we were told that April of 15 to 2015 was the end date for the antivirus. We learned in October that, at that time, the date was actually April 15th, 2014, but they have pushed it back to July of 2015. So, Microsoft will continue doing antivirus updates until July of 2015. Okay. In March, basically, we purchased equipment, we provided training for our staff because it was a new environment that we were going to in the network, and we got up a test environment so that way we could test to see how things were gonna work, get our images straight, test our software, make sure all the pieces and parts were together before we actually rolled it out at schools. We reviewed the specs for Windows 7 operating system, and at that time, we looked at all the models of computers that we have. Our oldest computers, we bought, I believe it was like in 2001, so that's how old some of them are. Anything from there through 2005, or ones we're saying cannot run Windows 7, we are having some that were bought late 2005 up to the present that we are able to update to Windows 7 by just adding memory. Okay? Okay? So those older machines are the ones we've identified cannot be updated, and we need to replace those. Okay? So that was gonna be a two-year process to replace those. Um, so we started informing the principals back in April and May at principals' meetings, letting them know that this change was coming, that we were gonna have to surplus these older machines, replace them, which would leave some schools with no computers, such as partially. Every computer in that school was one model and it was old. Some schools, such as your newer schools, your Snipes, your, your Ogdens, your Castle Hanes, your Holly Shelters, would, wouldn't have to get rid of any machines because they were all newer. It wouldn't be fair to remove all of them from one school, leave everything at another school. So at that point in time is when we looked and we found that we had four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two machines that could not run the operating system. So, we decided we had funds and we bought computers, we bought twenty-one hundred to make up for the others. We were moving computers around, so that way we didn't have haves and have-nots, we kinda equally distributed the computers throughout the schools. And that's where we came with cutting down from four student and one teacher to student, two student and one teacher per classroom. Okay? So in April and May, we informed the principals of the principals' meeting that this was potentially gonna happen, and then August, at the principals' retreat, went into great detail with the principals about this, had them discuss it, told them to discuss it with their teachers, let them know this was coming, to start thinking outside the box. How could they arrange the other technology that they had so that way they could use it still and be able to accomplish what they needed to accomplish instructionally in their schools? And then the plan is in July, when we get our capital funds, to purchase all the machines that we surplus and place them back in the classrooms, so the schools have them back for next school year. Okay? And the last one is just a summary of the timeline. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It may be because of the age of the machines. I mean, Windows Seven is an antique Windows system. I mean, they've gone to eight, and I understand there's a ten coming out or has come out. I had one person ask me, said, why are we putting in Windows Seven when it is so obsolete?
It's not obsolete, it's stable.
It's old.
And that's why we're putting it in is because it's stable. Windows Eight, there's some issues with, and we actually plan to skip over Windows Eight. Windows Seven, right now, the service pack one will be around till twenty twenty. So it's gonna be around for a while. Our plan is to standardize on Windows Seven. We're gonna skip eight and wait till nine comes out, and we're gonna go to the Windows Nine after that. It's a matter of which stable, just like when, um, what's my people back there? Yes, when Millennium came out and some of those other ones, we skipped those operating systems just because they weren't very stable. So we went from ninety-eight to XP and then, you know, XP to Windows Seven. We don't go to every single one of them, we try to see what's out there, see how stable it is before we make the determination of going to that operating system.
And Windows has, or Microsoft has assured you that, that there will be service and, uh, through twenty, what'd you say, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, yes. When, um, if you go to Microsoft's website for their operating system support, it's up there, I had to look at it because I had gotten an email from, um, one of the schools questioning me about that, and they will support the service pack that's currently out there till twenty twenty.
And secondly, when we get our, when we do our capital budget for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, am I clear to understand that in that budget will be a request to acquire sufficient computers so that all the schools will go back to having the number of computers they had prior to all of this?
Yes, sir. That was in the capital request last year. It was the very next item down. We didn't have enough funds for, to do the whole thing because it was over a million dollars. So we got some funds, and so that's our number one item is the remainder of funds. It's one point four million for putting back these computers.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have an example of a school that's already been through the conversion? And how are they, how are they doing? How is it running?
Roland Grice was the very first school that we did. We converted them back in July. The teachers were kind of unsettled about losing computers, but once they got them and saw how much faster they were and how quickly they started and logged in, they were, they're loving it and they're, they're using them. It just, it saves them time because they're not having to wait the extra time that they had to wait for turning it on, waiting for it to point, then the kids logging in and waiting more, because they were waiting, some schools, you know, like ten to fifteen minutes for the kids to finally get logged in. And now it's just a matter of a couple of minutes. So, the Roland Grice is, is happy about it. We just finished Myrtle Grove, they're thrilled to death, teachers that got in there faster. It's working very smoothly. We've had some schools volunteer to, to give up computers that had that correct model, just said, here, go ahead, we've already pulled some from the classrooms, take these, use these at the other schools. College Park was one, there's a couple others that kind of volunteered to do that, Partially was another.
For any school that, um, and I don't know who to address this question to, um, for any school that, that may still be struggling with that, where, um, they, I, I know for some of our Title One schools, which we'll be getting a presentation later, um, they were talking about for the after-school programs, a problem with accessing computers. I'm just wondering if maybe this might be a little bit of a problem. I know we, uh, some of our schools, I, I believe some teachers have both a laptop and a desktop. Would it be possible maybe to at least temporarily convert the desktop to a student, uh, student computer?
We could do that, either the desktop or the laptop, either one could pull. I've told the teachers in the schools to think outside the box, do things differently. You know, if you have a school where the teacher has a desktop and a laptop, you can pull the laptops from the teachers, put those temporarily in a cart, use those. In the classrooms, you know, you might want to pull, like in third grade, all the student desktops into one room, rotate the kids throughout that room when you do stations. You know, break apart, you know, at an elementary school, they get more bang for their buck out of classroom computers. So, break apart the carts that we place, because, you know, every school either has either three or five laptop carts in the elementary level. Take those apart, put a few in each classroom, so that way they have more in the classroom. I said, think about, you know, where do you get the most, you know, advantage of using the technology? If it's not in a full cart, if it's individually in the classroom, which is what, you know, Castle Hane told me they're planning on doing, they're planning on taking apart their carts and putting some in each classroom to kind of make up for that. I said, that's perfectly fine. If you get more use and it helps you instructionally do it, you know, it's your, it's your school.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, one quick question. Um, on your timeline, it says that we found that this October, that Microsoft pushed the antivirus cutoff to July two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, sir.
So, if the reason for removing these computers, at, at least, uh, from what I've heard, is because they will no longer support antivirus software, if, if they're going to continue to support antivirus software till July two thousand and fifteen, couldn't we just leave the computers in the classrooms till July?
We could, but there'd be a couple of issues that we'd have to face. We have two sets of schools. We have schools that are what we call Novell schools, okay? That network operating system cannot handle Windows Seven machines. That's why all those schools, all the computers are Windows XP. If we leave those schools, those computers there and we don't upgrade the server, that means twenty of those school sites which we have left, we'd have, or, no, excuse me, twelve sites that we have left would have to be done all during the summertime from, basically, school gets out until the end of the, till the school comes back. We don't have the manpower to do twelve sites during the summertime with all the other projects that we have. And then we have the schools that have already converted, they're active directory with the Zenworks. If we leave those there, they can stay because their server can handle Windows Seven and Windows XP, so they're upgrading the ones that they can. If we leave those, it'd just be a matter of having the manpower to go into the school site, wipe those machines and pull them this summer. And it's just having the resources, and just with my staff, we don't have the, the resources or time to do that. So it is doable, but we would need those resources to, to pull that out.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Dawn, for your presentation. Next item, item B, evaluation of New York County Schools After School Supplemental Education, appendix A, Dr. Smith.
Good evening. Um, I would like to present to you a summary of the evaluation of the supplemental educational services for our Title One after-school program. I'd first like to begin by providing you with just a little historical context. In May two thousand and twelve, um, North Carolina State Board of Education was granted, um, flexibility in the offering of after-school supplemental educational services. This flexibility made significant changes in the implementation requirements, and, um, it allowed us to move away from working with outside vendors to provide after-school services for our children and for the district to be able to provide those services. So for our current context, we have, for the last two years, been providing services to our Title One schools, after-school supplemental educational services to our Title One schools. We have utilized a program, um, called Compass Learning, along with providing students with the opportunity for, um, one small group instruction and also the opportunity to co- complete homework during that time. Um, the Compass Learning software off, offers a curriculum that allows for differentiation and personalization. Student's, uh, learning path is created for each student within the program, and that student has the opportunity to work through specifically, um, selected lessons for the, for that child. Um, the student also, as I said before, has the opportunity to complete homework and works in a small group setting with the classroom teacher during that time. Teachers also have the ability through this program to progress monitor the, um, performance of students, and students work through those lessons until they reach a point of mastery. The inputs for the program have been that students were selected, um, for the program that met two days per week. Indigrade scores were used as one of the drivers, uh, predictors for students who needed these services. Students participated in activities that were focused on, um, increasing their academic abilities in the area of reading and mathematics. In regards to student participation, we had seven hundred and forty-six students at the elementary level that participated in the program. We had one hundred and sixty-one students at the middle school level. And you can see the differing numbers of children at each grade level. And, and the far right column, you see the numbers of activities that those children participated in, as well as the average learning time for each of those activities for children in the elementary school as well as the middle school level.
That seems rather a short amount of time. I mean, I, can you give me a better explanation? I mean, seven point eight two to nine point four seven five, I mean, less than ten minutes on an act, activity?
The, the activities were designed to be at the child's point of need, so some activities were somewhat slightly below their, um, current level, other activities were slightly above. They were designed to be very short in duration, so they weren't necessarily met, um, assessing a student's level of perseverance with a particular activity, um, but just that specific skill set. Part of what the program, um, recommends is that students spend thirty to forty-five minutes in a session, but they're gonna work on multiple activities dur- throughout that session.
So you're saying that, like, elementary, they would have worked on four or five different, three or four different pri- uh, activities during a session?
Yes, they may have. Or you might have had a child who, um, might have spent fifteen minutes on one particular activity, or a child who may have spent two or three minutes on a particular activity.
Can you give me an example of what an activity would be?
Um, a question would be posed, um, through the, um, the, the program. Child would read through that or have that read to them, and then they would simply have to respond. There might be an activity where a child had to drag and drop something, um, to show that they understood the concept that was being presented.
So this is while they're on with the Compass Learning, is that correct?
So, the teacher is not with that group at that time, is that correct?
No, the, the group of children, in essence, would be, um, divided into thirds. You'd have a group of children who might be working independently on some homework activities. Um, there might be a small group of children working with the teacher, um, it, for, um, activities that the teacher has pulled related to their learning needs, and then there would be a small group of children who would be working at the computer station. So you might have four children working at a computer station, two or three children working with the teacher, and two or three children working independently.
Okay, my question, if you're working at the computer, and it's geared to your point of learning, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, point of need.
So, if this child is not truly engaged, they can press a button and answer, but how do they know, how does the teacher know they're not guessing? How do they, how do you know that it's working?
Well, I think that's a great question. Um, you, through your progress monitoring, so a teacher would pull down a report and look at the performance of a child. So say, for instance, if you know that this child was working on a specific skill and it, in, you know, reality, it probably should have taken eight to ten minutes to work through this particular lesson, and this child finished the lesson in two minutes. Then you would know that that child was not persisting in that work, that that child was not focused in that work and was just simply clicking through. Then that would provide the teacher with the information so that they would know to have maybe a one-on-one conversation with that child about that, um, behavior, or maybe even, you know, through proximity, locate themselves a little closer to the child so that they can monitor them a little bit more closely when they were working with the computer program.
So there's not really an opportunity for the teacher because of the number of students in that grouping to go back and work one-on-one with that child at that computer?
No, it wasn't designed that way. It, it is designed in such a way that it's, um, that it's engaging for children, um, and that you would want children, um, to, um, find the task that they're being asked to do meaningful. And so for the results, we looked at two measures. We looked at criterion reference benchmark, um, in essence, looking at those specific objectives outs, out of the Compass Learning program, and we also looked at norm reference tests, specifically the indigrade test. So in terms of outcomes for ELA in math, the average grade level scores on the criterion reference test were fifty-nine point seven percent to sixty-six point nine percent. And for math, the score ranges were thirty-four percent to forty-five point six percent. And when we looked in comparison to EOG scores, what we looked at were raw scale scores, and the average increase was four point five to eight point two in English Language Art, and a seven point six increase to actually a one point one decrease in mathematics for elementary students. And then in middle school, the raw scores were point five to eight point three, and then math, um, point three eight to five point one. And it's very important to say that we can't attribute this specifically to the after-school program because, of course, there are multiple interventions that students are receiving throughout the year. This is just one of the interventions that, um, was available to these particular students that we, we looked at.
Well, let me ask the question.
Yes, sir.
If you can't attribute it to the program, how are we expected to measure whether or not this is a program that is effective?
Well, I think that there are multiple indicators. Um, part of it is going to be the perception from the teachers and the, and the, um, the, the principals who, um, oversaw the program at the school site. Also, what we're looking at in the design of the evaluation for this year is actually to have a con- control group. We did not have a control group with this particular evaluation that was done, but we are looking to have a control group here. So say, for instance, if you've got, um, So say for instance, if you've got a group of children who are receiving multiple interventions as we do in our schools, what would be the one difference? So this school group of children got or received the after-school program. This group of children over here didn't. That comparison was not done as a part of this evaluation, but we are planning for that to be in our, our future evaluation. But a lot of our children, in the, in the selection of the children who received this intervention, many of those children are children who received many interventions throughout the year. So there are layered interventions for these particular groups of children. So it is very hard to determine exactly what's making the greatest benefit. And we do very much acknowledge and the, the summary of the outcomes that there are issues with the implementation or have been issues with the implementation. And we've made some changes just this year to make sure that we're, we're controlling for those as much as possible. And so in terms of teacher perception and principal perception, when we asked the question in regards of teacher and, and student engagement, teachers indicated in the affirmative seventy-one point seven percent that students were engaged. In terms of instructional approach as to whether it was effective, we had sixty-seven point nine percent to, to answer in the, the affirmative. And then adequate time, we had sixty point three eight. And though these numbers are greater than fifty percent, we, we believe that they are much below where we would like these results to be. We would like to see at least agreement of eighty percent or higher when talking about a program such as this or an intervention such as this. So we're, we are making changes and tweaking, and tweaks to hopefully achieve that result. When looking at program effectiveness, when we spoke to principals, fifty-seven point one percent of the principals had positive responses. We didn't have any negative responses, but the other principals were neutral in their response, which, you know, we don't want to see that either. We want them to have strong feelings either way about the program and so we're working on that as well. They did feel a little stronger than teachers in terms of student engagement. They were comparable to teachers in terms of the instructional approach and then the impact of the program in terms of positive responses, seventy-eight point five. Though that is very close to the eighty percent mark, we do believe that there is room for improvement there. On the side of the chart, you see our numbers for attendance. We believe attendance was a major issue here. Only thirty-five point seven percent of the students had regular attendance. And we found that sixty-four point two percent of the students had moderate to significant absences. So we do believe that that's a major issue and very impactful of the outcomes. And we're going to make some changes in terms of the selection of students for this coming year as well.
And we did provide transportation.
Yes, transportation was provided and we also provided a snack for children as well.
Did you study anything about why those sixty-four percent were not, that had been selected? Did not participate on a regular basis?
Well, we had multiple reasons. A lot of it was, it was just a lot, you know, asking children to begin as early as we did in the year and then to persist in the program. And so sometimes there were just conflicts and then sometimes it was, the children were just exhausted with having that in addition to the, the requirements of their regular school day. So we are making some, some tweaks there to, to, to address that issue.
When you're saying you're making, you're making tweaks, are you making them now? I mean, my, my thing is, we're getting this report now, it's November. And so it seems that I, that is actually one of my, my biggest concerns is that we're almost half, we're over halfway through the first semester and we're just getting the report from last year.
Yes.
So the information is not very timely from, from Compass Learning. I, I know the EOG, I understand about the EOG scores, but the, the Compass Learning information, why could that not be, not be presented any sooner?
Well, the final report, I did receive that last month, but there were some issues in the formatting of the report, so we had to send that back.
But even last month, I mean, even October, you've already started. You can't plan over the summer. Why cannot that not, I mean, at the end of the school year, the summer is the time to plan, to make those tweaks. Is that, is it not ever possible to get it right after the end of school?
Well, well, we haven't started the program for this year.
Okay, so we, we've already decided that we're not going to do it for the fall and we're only going to do it for the spring?
We, our, our goal is to start it this month and we, we are making, the changes that I'm going to share with you are the changes that we're making based on the data that we, that we had. We did have this preliminary information and have responded to that. We unfortunately just didn't have it in a format that would have been appropriate to, to present to the board. So that's why this, unfortunately, this presentation is coming so late. But we are being respond, responsive to the recommendations of the evaluator, yes.
Okay, so the report comes from Compass Learning?
No, the, the, the report comes from our, our outside evaluator.
Okay, so the report comes from Masonboro?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I guess still though, if it, if it comes and you're still only a month out from doing the program, how does that give you enough time to do the training? I mean, I, I saw some of the comments about, you know, they would, the, the teachers were saying they would like more training, possibly in the fall. They would like more flexibility over the subs. How can that happen when you only have a month to, a month and a half to plan?
Well, because we did receive some data preliminarily, we were able to be, to respond to it that way.
Okay.
Yes.
So what, what, what tweaks exactly have been made and what did you respond to already?
Yes, so one issue that we found was that children weren't spending enough time in their area of need. So we were trying to address reading issues and math issues both at the same time. And so we're going to give more time to the one primary area. So schools have the flexibility to identify for, for their children what area that will be.
So they don't have to do both reading and math, they can do either or?
Yes, yes. And so we feel then we'll spend more time in that area. Students will be able to progress through their learning path a lot quicker and will see the benefits of that, which hopefully will translate to their classroom performance as well. Greater transparency for teachers in terms of having, classroom teachers having access to this data is another change. And then greater flexibility for the schools in choosing who the children are. Children know their, their students much better, schools know their students much better than the, the district does. What, what we were doing before, we, we were looking very cut and dry at indigrade scores and determining who was on the cusp, who would benefit from the service. And we want to make sure that we've got good matches. So schools have that flexibility as well. Teachers can now add content to a child's particular learning path. So even if you're not the teacher who's working with the child during the summers, during the after-school, if you are that child's teacher, you can add content to that learning path. So you can add objectives, you can add standards that you would like to see that child work on.
What does that mean? You can add content, in, in Compass Learning, you can, you can, you can direct the curriculum?
Yes, so children will take a, more or less a placement test and based on that placement test, it'll generate standards or objectives that they should work on. And so if a teacher wants to add to that or maybe take away from that, they have that flexibility in creating that particular path for, for that, that child. So it's not going to just be directed by that placement test. And that's something that we, we've added that flexibility for this year.
Okay, so it's not necessarily grade-based, it's just, it's level-based?
Yes, it's, it's based on mastery of particular standards, yes.
And I may get back to that question that Mr. Higgins was asking about, yes. The teacher's able to add the content. If a child on a placement test just did much better on fractions and the teacher knows that they can do, they can go back in and add that as one of the student objectives?
Yes.
And you, you said this was the second year of this program?
We're actually going to be transition, we're going to be beginning our third year. So the last, this, this report is based on the second year, yes.
On the second year, okay. And so the, the comment section is, is what I think I was most interested in in terms of getting feedback from the, from the teachers. And, and one of the things that, you know, quite a few mentioned was, you know, sort of the inherent problems with, especially at an elementary level, a child who has been through an entire day of school and just is done. I, I don't want to do this anymore, I'm, I'm done, I'm not engaged. And that's, I think, what Ms., Ms. Nichols was alluding to. It's, it's, it's difficult to engage a child at that, at that period, at that point. So, you know, how, how do you plan to address that? Because it, it seems to me it, it's just far more beneficial to have interventions during the school day rather than waiting until after-school, an after-school program. And there were also problems with, you know, several of them said they didn't like it, they used their own.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I think giving them that flexibility is probably, you know, a better idea and they can address the issues based on the enrollment within their school, the children that have those needs. So, I don't know. Did we get any feedback from the teachers after the first year? I don't recall reading any information about what they were thinking at that point.
Yeah, well, the, the, you make a very good point. And we do, whenever possible, provide interventions during the school day. And I think one of the reasons why children sometimes are exhausted at the end of the day, as you said, is because they do get a lot of these interventions during the day. And with this program, teachers can access this during the school day if they so choose. We, at this point, are providing this as supplemental, so something in addition to. Schools get a particular number of slots and as I said before, in the past, the district has determined who those children would be. So what we're looking for is for schools to determine who they think this might be a best fit. And so if you've got a child who has multiple interventions going on during the school day, then it may not be appropriate to have this child participate at the end of the day. It may be that the school wants to use this as an intervention during the school day, which they definitely can. And then children also have access to this at home if that was a choice that the parents wanted to, to make as well. And so allowing schools the flexibility to, to select those children that they think would be the best fit, I think at this time, it's probably the greatest strategy that we have in maximizing the use of this after-school and making sure that we're selecting the right children. In terms of feedback from the year one program, I'm, I'm not sure about that. I would have to research and, and see if in the evaluation of that first program, there was actually that, the qualitative feedback from, from principals and, and teachers. I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Quite, quite an issue that very first year, it was the year they rolled out new assessments. And so we didn't have any data on those assessments until almost into the spring of the following year. And so I, I think that may have delayed any of the issues with the first-year evaluation.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the comments though, really have nothing to do necessarily with, you know, EOG scores. They just, they just didn't, had difficulty with the program or, or having difficulty get, engaging students. So, you know, that would have been helpful to have, to have known that a, a year ago.
Yes.
This may be out of sync with,
Yes ma'am.
But you mentioned you're going to start this month, November?
Schools have the, once again, in, in working with schools, because again, they know their population best. We do have schools that are starting this month and we will have schools that are going to be starting after that. We're, we're making sure that they have all the pieces in place. They've identified the right children, we've got transportation lined up for them and that they've got the teachers and the resource managers in place to support the successful implementation of this program.
And will the teacher have had the training by the time the program starts?
We do have training scheduled. There are some teachers that have received some training. I don't know when our next training date, see if Ms. Jackson, do you have a date on that?
Two days of training?
So we have two days this month scheduled?
So all of the training won't be completed before they start the program? Is my understanding?
Well, the, the training, there are two different days of training. So it's not that teachers have to participate with both days. So the teachers would be trained before they start, yes.
So how, how are the teachers selected? I know that, are we still asking Dr. Markley that a teacher give one day, a week of tutoring and not being compensated?
Well, at your own school, you can, you can have, ask that your teachers work in your school, obviously tutor and, and give extra help to kids in their own school. These teachers are selected, they apply to, to teach this position on a compensated basis. So, so it's not the same as working at an elementary school and you're doing a tutoring day private EOCs at your own school.
So some are doing it for pay and some are not. That's not a problem, if, if it's not a problem for the teacher. My concern is if you have a teacher who applies, is certified to teach, but say is a counselor, but they would like to do the tutoring because it's extra money and there aren't enough teachers selected, would that kind of counselor be chosen? If they're, and they, maybe they have the certification, but they don't have the content knowledge of what is expected. I'm thinking middle school students.
So would there be a situation where a certified teacher who's currently not in, teaching in the field be chosen to participate in the program? Then yes, I think that, that would exist if that would be agreeable to the, to the, to the school. One issue that we had with the program last year was that it was very taxing on teachers because as you said, sometimes they tutor their own children. Sometimes they have responsibilities for clubs and activities, meetings, other obligations after school. We have also, again, this year, allowed the flexibility if teachers want to almost kind of tag-team tutor. So you tutor on Tuesdays, I tutor on Thursdays. And that way it gives teachers less flexibility, less opportunity for, for, for burnout. We do try to make sure that whomever we have in front of the child is someone that the principal is comfortable with, the principal has confidence in and has the, the skill set to meet the needs of the children, whether they're currently teaching in the classroom or not.
I, I know that was a concern that a parent had expressed to me and I said, well, I really can't answer it, but you have, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Has, has any thought been given to answer Ms. Beasley's question about doing this tutoring first thing in the morning?
No, we haven't made the consideration of tutoring first thing in the morning. I think logistically, it would probably be very, very challenging to arrange that after, at our schools. But that has not been a conversation that I've been a part of.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, we're talking elementary here. And I mean, I know that they have like structured times, they do music and they do art and they do this and they do that and that thing, and it's kind of on a structure. And I know I have been to some conferences. I have been to some conferences where, not necessarily for this, but in other programs where they were trying to help students be successful, that students would, the first thing they'd do when they came to school was they would meet for a half hour, twenty minutes, half hour, something like that, first thing in the morning. And, and I'm just thinking that in answer to the issue of them having burned out by the time you get to the afternoon, if you catch them first thing in the morning, they may be more receptive to the tutoring that you're trying to do. It's just a thought.
I can definitely share that with our elementary schools. Ms. Jackson did share with me, we did have one middle school that did that, which was Virgo.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, I will say, it's a tougher issue with transportation in the morning because all of those buses are out. In the afternoons, they can do their runs and we can pick up a bus after the runs are done. To go before some of those early runs will be extremely early in the morning, so.
Well, I wasn't talking about going and picking them up and bringing them at like seven o'clock or seven thirty. I mean, I was talking about start, still starting at eight thirty. But ask the, the schools to, to consider when they structure their day that they, they allow some time in there for these students to be able. Because I mean, we're not talking about, I mean, you're not talking about a, a massive number of students when you scatter it over the twenty-some-odd elementary schools we have. I mean, you may be only talking about, you know, twenty, thirty students. And if this is beneficial, even if they're missing out on something else in the classroom, I would rather they get reinforced in math or get reinforced in English. And I do appreciate the fact that you're going to focus on one or the other. Get reinforced in that area of need, I think would be, would be good. And then, and then they would be fresh.
Well, and, and we did have seven hundred-plus students to participate. And the way it's currently scheduled, it's about a ninety-minute period. And part of that is connected to the fact of the, the late runs because usually- Because usually the earliest that our buses can pick up is four thirty. But I will definitely share that with the schools. I know that most schools, if not all, already have an intervention period. And again, a lot of these children are those children who are receiving some intervention during the day. But in the event that they're not receiving an intervention, schools can use this program during the school day with the children that they select. So that is a possibility. So instead of the afternoon, that they receive that during the intervention period during the day. So in terms of the summary and conclusion, I've shared with you that there have been kinks in the initial implementation of the program despite the fact that we have just completed our second year. Mixed results in terms of the outcomes. And we're going to, again, work on our evaluation of the program. We will actually have a control group that we look at for next year. And even though there were some organizational changes that were made from the year one to year two, there definitely does exist some principal concerns and some teacher concerns that we're working to be responsive to. And then these are the recommendations, I think most of which I've already shared with you. The other, I think that I haven't, is that we're going to put together a task force of folks who are impacted by this program and look at whether or not this is the solution for us or do we need to make changes in program changes or even structural changes? Is, you know, how we're breaking up the time that we're dedicating to after school, is that working? What do we need to do so that we make sure that we're bringing to our children the most effective after-school program, after-school services that we can? And then also providing teachers with additional professional development.
How is Compass Learning decided upon in the first place?
We looked at several different vendors. There were certain criteria that we were looking for. One, we wanted a program that could provide services both in reading and mathematics, which actually eliminated a lot of vendors. We didn't wanna deal with one platform for reading, one platform for math. We then took a look at some of their evidence-based results in other districts. And then I provided, actually, I was in the director's role at the time. I actually provided a summary to Ms. Jackson. And then from there, the decision was made to go with Compass Learning.
So this was, this is a program that's in use in other districts around the state?
Yes. Now, it's used somewhat differently. In some districts, as suggested by Mr. Higgins, it's actually used during the school day. Other districts, it's actually used as a part of their after-school programs. Some districts use it with all their children in a particular grade level, that type of thing. So we did look at some of their evidence-based results as well. If there are no more questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item is the agenda, item nine, superintendent's report, item A, University of County Schools, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, Ready Data Assessment Report, Deputy Street, Dr. Markley.
All right, this time I'm gonna ask Ms. Karen Green to come forward. Karen, as you know, heads up our testing department. And these guys do a phenomenal job of analyzing our data, looking at it, and then getting that data back to our schools. And one of the things you gotta understand about our data is you're gonna see a lot of different data types, EOGs, ACTs, SATs, different things. And these data points come in at different times during the year. Unfortunately, I would love to have everybody give me my data in July, give me July and August to analyze it and roll it out. But we get this data at different points in the year. And so that's why you get this presentation traditionally at this time of year. One other thing to note is that in January of this year, for the first time, the state will issue grades to schools. We'll do a presentation on that later on. But a lot of the data you see today, you'll need to recall as we roll into that discussion, probably in December or January.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the time to present some of our district data from two thousand thirteen, fourteen. This is called the Ready Report. Ready is our accountability model at the state level. And the two essential questions are, are students ready for the workforce, for careers, or are they ready for college? So it's a college and career readiness accountability model. The report I'm sharing with you tonight basically is district-level data. The annual report that you have that was shared earlier has the district overview, but it also has school pages, so every school has their own little report card.
And we'll put that online so that anybody who wants to look at that full report can see that online. I give Karen credit, one of the things over the last couple of years is our transparency with our data and folks' access to it has really improved. So I appreciate the work of the testing department.
Yeah, we'll have it on the scores and data link on our website. So I'm gonna overview just a little bit about the accountability model. There were some minor changes in the achievement levels for this past year. I'm gonna compare our school district to some other regional and urban districts across the state. And then we're gonna talk about the two main parts of our accountability model, performance and growth. Then we're gonna look at some of those other additional career and college readiness indicators. And then talk about progress, which is our federal annual measurable objectives for individual student groups. And then you have copies of the individual school profiles. And I apologize for my hoarseness. I've had that, whatever it is, and it won't go away. So the Ready Model components includes certain assessments at the elementary and middle school. We have the end-of-grade English Language Arts and Math in grades three through eight, and then Science in grades five and eight. And then end-of-course assessments for middle school students who are participating in some high school courses. At the high school level, we have, in addition to the end-of-course assessments, we also have the graduation rate, that's factored into the school's model. The ACT results for eleventh graders, and that's the percentage of students that score at the composite of seventeen on the ACT, which is a score that's acceptable by the University of North Carolina system. And then we have a math course rigor metric, and that's the percentage of students that successfully complete Math Three, previously known as Algebra Two. Then we have the Work Keys, which is really our career ready. The ACT is really our college-ready assessment. The Work Keys assessment is our career-ready assessment. And that is given to graduating seniors who are career cluster concentrators in the CTE courses such as the health occupation courses or the preschool area. There's some Microsoft certifications and some other technological things also that would deem students career concentrators. They have to have four hours of courses and one secondary course in order to be considered a concentrator. And so they participate in our Work Keys assessment. And the percentage of concentrator graduates who are awarded at least a silver count in our accountability model, these are credentialed students that are recognized by over sixteen businesses in our area. So they're graduating with a credential that's recognized by BB and T, by AAI, and some other businesses in our area. And then, of course, the graduation project. We get credit, they don't really give us a percentage. We just get like a checkmark that endorses that we do the graduation project district-wide. Now, the accountability measures are really some of the language that we talk about when we talk about all of these numbers. The first one is called performance. And that's really the percentages of students who score at the achievement levels one through five. We have achievement levels one through five. And to talk a little bit about the change, because we did have just achievement levels one through four. Generally, for overall proficiency in just about everything we do, including those new school performance grades that are coming out, levels three, four, and five are considered proficient or passing. Because there was a change that was made after the ESEA waiver that was approved by the government, we have to report two different ways. And so for those students that are achievement level three, four, and five, we call that grade level proficiency if we include the achievement level three. But we, those that score four and five, we call those career and college ready. Because under the ESEA waiver, that was what we had presented to the feds. The performance composite is just the percentages of test scores in the entire school. So it's that one number that you'll see that's published for each school, and that's all of the proficiencies in the school. Growth is the other part that we look at, and it's really a balancing act because you really have to talk about both at the same time. You know, proficiency is, did the students meet the mark? But growth is, are they making progress? Are we moving children? So growth is an indication of the rate at which the school, the students learned over the past year. And the expectation is that you have one year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction. If you have more than that, then you met what, you exceeded what the growth expectations were. So there are three designations for a school. Did not meet the growth expectations, met the growth, or exceeded the growth expectations. And then we have progress. And that's whether the students in a school as a whole or groups of students are making progress. So that's when we look at our subgroups, our different groups of students. Students with disabilities, limited English proficient students, and so forth. So there has been a little revision to the accountability model. From twelve thirteen, we reported levels one through four, and now we're reporting levels one through five. When I show you trend data today, when I look from two thousand twelve thirteen to two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I'm going to be comparing apples to apples because I'm gonna be discussing just those level fours and fives, which had the same scale range as the previous threes and fours. But it's important to note that this year, for school performance grades, that the state grade level proficiency of level three will be included in reporting that. What they found is when they looked at the number of students that were a level two and you looked at the skill ranges from the lowest to the highest, they realized that the students had very different skills. So they brought teachers back in again and relooked at those items. And that was the motivation behind going from one to four to one to five. So as a teacher, now, I can better delineate really the skills that my student is entering in my classroom with. Because if they have a level three, I know they have enough to make it to the next grade, but they're gonna need some additional support. So the performance composite, which is the one overall number, I've decided to show it both ways. So thirteen, fourteen, the first set of bars, is the grade level proficiency. That includes the threes, fours, and fives. And then the college and career ready is just the fours and the fives. And so if you look at the difference between the two, those are your students that are level threes. We reran the numbers and printed the reports, and so teachers have access to that data. If you look at our performance composite against the region, we are leading the region and the state in our overall performance composite. We lead other urban districts with the exception of Wake County. And we lead similar-sized districts in every course and grade with the exception of biology.
And that's been our trend for the last three years.
We met growth in biology. You know, our proficiency dipped a little bit, but we did meet growth. And so that's why when you're looking at one metric, you have to look at the other as well. So you kinda get a balance in terms of what the real picture is. This is something we put together that just kinda puts some of the charter schools. I know there are always lots of questions about what's going on in those charter schools. So we kinda ranked them among our schools and the state just to give you a feel for how they did in terms of performance composite and growth. At the time that we pulled this, we did not have growth information for charters, but we do plan to get that to you.
It's hard to compare a single school to an entire district. So when we look at charter schools, we look at them as individual schools, and then we're interested to see how they compare to our individual schools.
They're like, they're treated like their own school district. Like one school is just that district. So when I'm, I told you last year when I came and did the baseline data that I was gonna bring you some, you know, trend data. I'm gonna show you if we had an increase or a decrease. So for these two-year line graphs, I'm showing you just the levels four and five. So they're, it's comparable. You're comparing the same scale scores. And this is our district performance composite compared to the state. We're moving in the right direction, but we do have a lot of areas in which to work. And that's one of the great things about being able to serve the schools in the capacity that my department has. We're able to have those conversations in tandem with the Instructional Services Department. In English Language Arts, grade three through eight, in every grade, we either met or exceeded growth expectations. In third grade reading, we exceeded growth expectations. Grades three through eight math, we're making progress. We met or exceeded in every grade level except for fourth grade math. We have some work to do. Dr. Smith, is there something you'd like to share with what the team's doing in terms of, you know?
Well, we do recognize that fourth grade math is an area of focus for us. Just this year, we've allocated some additional resources and reorganized our team so that fourth grade math can be a focus.
Yeah, that was, it wasn't just a single school with fourth grade math. It was just, that was a grade level across the board for us. And I would tell you, it was a grade level across the state that was, we've got a good handle on that.
Yes. Grades five and eight, science. In English Two, we're making progress. And we met growth for English Two. Math One, we exceeded growth, and we are steadily making some progress. And Biology, that was an area that we're gonna need to focus more on. But when you look at the growth component, we did meet expected growth for Biology, but our proficiency dipped.
And I will tell you, when you get into the subjects at the school level, one teacher who teaches four or five sections can make a real difference up or down. I know Mr. O'Brien's sitting in the back, and he's always had, done great with Biology. But if you have a retirement of somebody who's a phenomenal teacher, it takes time to get that department back up to what that teacher was doing. And so these subject areas, when you've got somebody who made at one school only one or two people teaching him, can make it very teacher-dependent when you have to make a change and you bring in a brand-new rookie teacher who's gonna need some time to get up to speed. And I think that plays a little bit into what happened with Biology. I mean, we stayed flat and the state jumped up and caught us.
And then we have performance for student groups.
And this is an area, folks, that we'll, we can, we do well overall. But if we could address the issues with a couple of our subgroups, we can see not only our overall proficiency go up, but we can help those groups. And that's an area that we need to focus on.
And that's where all the interventions come in and the after-school programs and all those pieces fit together so that we can see improvement in what we're doing with students.
And with the LEP students and the SWD, do we look at how many more children are coming in with those needs that impact on the change? Because I know we're getting more and more LEP students.
We've got, for those of you that don't know, we speak thirty-six different languages in our schools. It's not a case of everyone thinks it's just kids coming, Hispanic kids coming in. Thirty-six different languages. And that, we have refugees coming in from all over the world at different times of the year. One of the trends we saw this year that really concerns me is some of the kids we're getting with... One of the trends we saw this year that really concerns me is some of the kids we're getting with, who are LEP, if they can, if they can read and write in their native tongue, working with them is, makes it easier to transition to English. But we had a really large number of students coming in who are illiterate in their native tongue, let alone that makes learning English and writing English that much tougher. And you'll see with our, some of our, our, our link, our LEP kids is that their reading scores are down here, but their math scores are much better. So it's not an intelligence issue. It's, it's, we gotta, we got, we need a couple of years to get their language skills to catch up to that.
And just to summarize, growth. Our growth improved from the previous year, surpasses the state's growth. Eighty-four percent of our schools met or exceeded growth expectations this year, which answers the question, are we moving children? One of our priority schools, SNIPs, exceeded growth expectations in all of their grades, except for the, you know, we all struggled in fourth grade math. But that was really exciting to see because when you have a low performing school like that, the children have to have more than one year's worth of instruction in order to get caught up, if you will. That was a celebration. Some other career and college readiness indicators, our graduation rate stayed a little stagnant. We did migrate to a new graduation reporting system and there were some issues statewide with some of the numbers. Hopefully this year, because of the things, the work that we're doing with the grad, with the dropout prevention committee, I know we're going to see improvement this year. We grew tremendously with the ACT. Even for some of our student groups. So not just overall, but our students with disabilities group almost doubled in their proficiency mark. And our African-American student group improved as well.
One of the things I like about ACT is this isn't, this is not a state test, but it's, it's a national test and it gives us a number we can look at to compare ourselves to other folks who are doing, who are using ACT. And so it's almost like an outside test evaluation for us. And, and to be that far ahead of the state, I'm pleased with. And this is just simply the composite score of those who had a seventeen or better.
Just eleventh graders too.
Yeah, just eleventh grades. So they, some of these kids, while they didn't make, may not have been an overall seventeen, may have passed certain subsections of that test.
And the work keys assessment, we improved tremendously. The work that Laverne Pickett and her team is doing with the schools has really made an impact on that work keys assessment. And then of course, math course rigor.
That says ninety-five percent of the stages on the test will always say greater than ninety-five percent. They don't actually give you a percentage past that.
That's correct. And then our graduation rate for some of our target groups, we know we've got some work to do. Advising students, scheduling, providing that additional support that some of them need. One of the things that it's important to note with the students with disabilities graduation rate is the students that are on the extended content standards, the students with significant cognitive disabilities, they participate in the graduation ceremony, but they don't get a diploma. So they get a certificate of attendance, if you will. And they count against our graduation rate. Even though what they're going, the, the program for them is the most appropriate for them. And, you know, they're happy to walk across or roll across the stage and, you know, they've got their piece of paper. But because they only get a certificate of, of attendance, they're, they count against us.
One other group that counts, one other group that counts against us, which frustrates me, is if a student transfers out of high school into the community college high school program, that's counted as a dropout for the high school. Now, at the end of the day, I signed that child's diploma along with the community college president. And we had hoped there was going to be some changes in the legislation with that this year or the rules around that. But the state opted not to do that. That is frustrating, folks, because about three or four times a year, I will sign about a hundred diplomas for kids who are graduating high school, but are showing up on our records as dropouts.
Well, and it's important to note, Dr. Markley, if you don't mind that I add this. I taught in that program down at Cape Fear and oftentimes the children finish and start in the community college before their cohort finishes high school.
Yeah, I, that was, I had a, a daughter who was really good. But she was getting somewhat frustrated in school and she threatened to quit and go to Cape Fear Community College because she could get a GED probably in a month and a half, finish everything, and then go ahead and start at the community college in the college transfer program. So you're right. I mean, there needs to be, that, that needs to be addressed, I mean.
And we thought we were there this year. Al went and sat and represented us on, on a meeting with that. The state superintendent had said, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And then we got the notice last month that no, it never even really got considered.
Well, I mean, I think if somebody goes to the community college within a month, maybe even two, I don't know what the timeframe, I mean, obviously if they go three years from now, I mean, but if they leave us and immediately go to the community college within a reasonable amount of time, then clearly their only intent was they just weren't happy in the public school system, but they still wanted to get a degree.
Yeah, and I'm all, I mean, and there were different, sometimes kids need these different paths to graduation. So I, I, I mean, it, it's a great program, it serves a need, but it just frustrates that these kids show up on our records as dropouts when they're graduating and going on oftentimes to the community, straight to the community college.
So these are, these are students who essentially leave the public school system and go to community, community college in the GED?
No, the adult high school program. It's a different, it's actually they attend school in the union.
But technically they've dropped out of high school. They've dropped out of the public school.
The state says they have, but I signed their diploma that says they graduated high school.
Well, you signed GED diplomas too.
No.
You don't?
Gee, the GED is now a private kind of entity. It's different than.
I, I know when I was chair that I was signing them down too.
Don still, Don signs, he don't, Don and I both sign the adult high schools.
Right, right. But I mean, it's also a kind of a self-directed program. I mean, you, it's not anymore.
No, this is, you, you have courses you have to take to graduate.
Yeah, but you have to, but you, you can take these courses as fast as you want to.
No, you, you doesn't, you take it, it's, they're semester courses. They're, it's, and you're taking high school courses that are tied to North Carolina high school standards.
I, well.
It's, it's, it's evolved.
Well, it, it may have evolved. I mean, I, I still think though you are capable of completing your high school diploma faster at the community college than you would be able to get that diploma at the public school system.
Yeah, but it's, it's also based on a twenty-one credit diploma and not on our twenty-eight.
Well, I mean, you know, and that, that could, that could be too.
Yep.
But the, the program itself was, was created at Cape Fear to address the needs of people who had not graduated, not finished high school, like you said, three years, ten years later, to go back to school and, and complete their high school diploma, is that right?
As far as I know, they're all going to the community colleges, the adult high schools.
Yeah, that, each, each community college has an adult high school program. I couldn't give you the history of when they started. I know they've been in existence. I mean, I was the principal fifteen years ago when they were, and they've been around that long, so.
I would say Cape Fear, thirty-four years ago and it was around then, so.
Yep. It, it just frustrates me that these kids are counting on our records as dropouts when they're really productive graduating students who then oftentimes go straight into a community college course.
Let me ask the most glaring question on that slide. What happened with our limited English proficient children? Minus thirty point five percent change.
It was a small number of students. That's why I put the little carrot there just to indicate, because when you're working with small numbers, but only six of twenty-one students graduated.
And to be classified as LEP, these kids are, are fairly, some of these are new to our system.
New, yeah.
Within the last three years. If you would start it with us as a kindergartner and as an LEP student, you wouldn't be an LEP student in high school. So these are kids who came to us with very limited English skills at this point.
And oftentimes finish in five years, but you know, we're reporting four year.
Okay, so, so what is the definition for LEP in high school? They have to be LEP when they enter high school?
They have to score a certain, on the, on the WAPT assessment, they have to have a certain score. And then there's an annual test called the access test that they continue to take. And until they reach every, and that's an annual test that occurs in February. And until they attain a certain level on all facets of that assessment, speaking, reading, listening, and writing, they're considered LEP. And so they may test out in the, the speaking part, but they still, you know, have to struggle with written language. Then they're still considered LEP. They have to, to score a certain test overall number on, on that test as a whole.
This isn't the case of where if you're LEP once, you stay LEP all the way through. So you can, you can simply by learning the language work your way out.
It's as you progress.
Yeah, well, that's good. But having said that, somehow we graduated, you know, fifty-nine percent a year ago. And the state is graduating fifty-two percent roughly. And this year, I mean, I know it's a small sample size, but still, that, that's really poor.
We'd have to, actually go and look at the background of some of those kids too and when they came to us. Did they just come to us? Have they been with us for, for any length of time? We can dig into that data a little deeper for you and get your, a little more data.
Yeah, we should, I think as a, as a school system, we need to look into that data because, I mean, of all the groups there, I mean, at least we, we stayed relatively constant across groups. You know, fallen, fallen back in a couple of groups.
I can go back and look at those, those students and provide you with additional information if you'd like. If it was a scheduling thing, if maybe they had to take some additional electives because they were struggling with the language acquisition. I can get you that information if you'd like.
We do so much in terms of interventions to keep children, you know, to, to graduate. And we, we may need to look at that subgroup to specifically tailor interventions to that subgroup. Because I mean, that's just a glaring change for the worse.
Maybe a case that they're actually still with us and they need that fifth year because of the language issues.
Well, I have, I have a same, the same question about the students with disabilities. That is a, a big drop as well. I would like to know your point about students with more severe handicaps. I would, can you carve out that? Could you, could you parse out that piece of the, the data? And let me know how many of, of those students got that separate extended.
Would you like that by school or district wide?
District wide's fine, because I, I, I don't think it's a huge number. But, but, you know, we're only graduating a little over half of those students. And if you look at that and you couple that with the proficiency numbers, which are, are, are poor at best, fourteen point seven, thirteen point nine, and two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, they're the lowest of any group, subgroup for proficiency, proficiency rates. I, I mean, we need to delve into that as well. That's, you know, those aren't numbers, those are students.
May I respond?
Yes.
We presented at the beginning of this year that we had concerns about this, as you recall, which is one of the big reasons why Ms. Askew and I worked all last year in putting together a restructuring plan for our special education program. As you knew, that was one of the most exciting things about hiring a new director is getting to do that. And we have done that and presented that to you. And our major focus is looking at instruction. And working with our instructional team and Dr. Smith, we, as you might recall, we said we were overstaffed and needed to scale back on some staff issues and spend money on staff development where we can train all teachers, which I know that this has been a concern of this board for some time. And we have put that plan in place this year and we look for better results. Some of the things as, that have already been mentioned here by Ms. Green, who's done absolutely wonderful job of providing us information and, and helping us drill down on information, our statistical anomalies, such as the number of children who will never receive a diploma and through no fault of their own or through no fault of the school system, count against us. One of the other statistical problems that we have are the number of children that we have in our occupational courses study that we have difficult times getting work hours for them. And they have to spend additional time in school or wind up in another program through really no fault of their own or really no fault of the school system. So those are a couple of statistical issues that we're dealing with. But we also recognize that we've got some instructional issues, some academic issues that we've got to address and we have addressed that through our restructuring plan. And we're hoping, I mean, we're hoping, we're, we're betting on it that it will, it will, you will begin to see improvement because we will be training not only our special ed teachers, but our teachers who work with, all of our teachers work with our special ed population. It's not that their child will be working with special ed, that a teacher will be working, a special ed teacher is working with special ed population. But most of them, as you said, are resource-based students who work with all of our teachers. We may be working with our special ed teacher a part of the day or a period of the day or maybe even consultative, but not all day. So we've got to get all of our teachers up to speed and working with children with special ed. That's what we're doing.
And just to show you some trend data for the ACT. And keep in mind that these are our juniors. So sixty-eight point eight percent of our met the UNC requirements in, in their junior year. On work keys, we improved tremendously. And it's really exciting to know that our kids are, our students are credentialed when they graduate from high school and ready for the workforce. Businesses like Applied Analytical, BBNT, and some other businesses in town recognize that certification. Career and technical education also have end of course tests for all of their courses in high school. And I'm happy to report that their overall proficiency has improved. It's at eighty-five percent. And in looking at the credentials that the students earned in high school, we had one thousand fifty credentials earned in some of these areas by our students.
In fact, this is a number that I don't think we, we celebrate enough. These are credentials you can take and walk into certain jobs and it will help you get a job. We've done a lot of work this year around looking at vocational ed. We've made several trips up to Raleigh to the vocational school there. And, and as we move forward, I want to make sure we, we continue to focus on vocational ed and look at ways outside of our bond track to, to really beef up that vocational program. Laverne's done a great job with putting these in place. And, and I get frustrated sometimes when folks say, well, we don't do vocational ed anymore. We actually do it in every one of our schools and, and do it to a high level. This is just part of that that validates that we've got over a thousand kids walking out with actual career credentials.
And then we, our last indicator is progress. And that's called our annual measurable objectives. And that's where we have different numbers of target groups at every school.
This is the sort of the, the successor to, for those who remember AYP, No Child Left Behind. Now the state, now the federal government calls it AMO.
Annual Measurable Objectives. And these are all the student groups that are reported. And if a school has thirty in that group, then it's reported for that school. That's why you may see some schools have more targets than others. And it's because of the different number of student groups that they have. And then for those student groups, they, these are the assessments that we look at. So in three eight, we look at math, ELA, science, and then overall student attendance. Then in high school, we look at our ESE courses, but then our career and college readiness measures as well. Then we have to ask ourselves two essential questions. So you really get a score for each student group for each test. You get two scores because one is based on participation. For that particular assessment, did that target group participate in the assessment? Did we have at least ninety-five percent participation? So we get a, the federal government requires that we have a participation grade. And then the other essential question is, did the student group meet the performance standard? Did they meet the target? And as a district, we met eighty-five percent of our targets. And then the second part of the presentation is just the, the ready report that you have that was sent to you ahead of time, where you have a district summary at the beginning. But then you have a s- school. But then you have a school report that customizes for each individual school. And that'll also be posted on our webpage, under Scores and Reports, on the Scores and Reports link. Are there any additional questions?
Questions?
Oh, you're welcome. It's my pleasure. It's a pleasure to serve this district. It really is.
No other questions? Thank you, Ms. Green. This time, it's been asked if we take a break, so let's take one of our short five-minute breaks. My last jam.